These are the triggers that would allow an amendment or would allow consideration of an amendment. Those are things that you can put in the document now so that later on, twelve years from now, or thirty years from now, you can say, the city can say, you know, we really don't like this anymore. It doesn't make sense. And, you know, there's a way to amend that. Or there's a term of years. I mean, I've suggested that before, a temporal limitation. You know, when we talked to Utah Open Lands about that, they really, they don't like that very much because it cuts into the idea that this will be maintained open space in perpetuity. Somebody could come in if they were, I mean, so if you, if you say, we're gonna do this for two years, we're gonna turn it over to somebody else, take away our freedom to change this, but in two years we can change it, why would you go through the exercise?
I, I think I've seen an agreement with Utah Open Lands, with Salt Lake County, where I think they have like twenty years where it was within a certain parameter, but then at twenty years, they were able to have some more flexibility in terms of park improvements, you know, pavilion or other place structures and things of that nature.
And as I said, you can, we can build that into the document. You just tell us what you want, and we can, we can make that work.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a permanent conservation easement for the permanent protection of Lambert Park, or it could be a permanent, intended to be permanent with a, an automatic renewal after twenty years. So we get to twenty-five year mark, for example, and it's an automatic renewal unless somebody raises their hand and says, hold on, let's reevaluate the use of this land. And that could be built in. I think that helps address some of the concerns that people have that in perpetuity, we lose, you know, direct control over everything that happens in the park.
I mean, I think that could make some sense. On the other hand, I hate, I'd hate to have it be year twenty or year twenty-five, have bad luck, and that's the year where we have our worst case scenario, right? And now, you know, every other year for fifty years, you know, it'd be preserved, but.
It would ever make sense, and I brought this up briefly. This is just, don't know, even think on this, but like every five or ten years, at a designated time, there's, there's a window for you to make some modifications. But those modifications could only happen, maybe you put the rules on it, that's unanimous, spoke by the city council. I bring that up because, as I was saying, e-bikes, it's a great example. I think if it were to come right now and we had a conservation easement, I think we'd all probably be unanimous that, okay, we need to modify the conservation easement. But for issues like that, as long as it's not in every year, whenever we vote, we want to do it. But if there's a deadline, whether it be five years or ten years, I think twenty years is too far out, but just to say, okay, this is the period, I mean, if you're running for city council, that's an issue that year, if it's coming out. And, and if it's a majority thing, I think you're not gonna have these parties that have, you know, personal gain, you know, and try to stack, because you're gonna have a breadth of opinions on that city council. So that would, I mean, that's just an idea that would give it the flexibility when it's an obvious modification that needs to happen. I mean, I, I think you're talking about, you have the, the, the core values of the conservation easement. It's always a conservation easement, but within that conservation easement, we have the ability to reevaluate periodically, whatever that period is, to make those modifications in the management plan. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I think it needs to be more than just a simple majority for modifications on the conservation.
That's what I'm saying. I said, I went to say unanimous. Not even a super, a unanimous is, I would think. And I think the council could work together to make the right choices there based on that. Sometimes we get a divided council as we pass the past and, you know, pick sides, but to be united on something, you know, it has to be a pretty big deal for, or an obvious decision for that to happen. So how does everybody feel about that concept, periodic reviews, and we can figure out what that is, five, seven, ten years, that as long as there's a unanimous vote to change part of the management plan, that, excuse me, sorry, that changes made by unanimous vote. Again, that's just to the management plan. It's not to the ownership or ability to sell or any violation of any of the core values. Does that help address some of your concerns?
It does to, to a degree. I think the interesting thing about this is this is such a, a foreign, well, I can't say foreign, but I'll just try and, and say it. This concept is objectionable to some because it is, even though you're saying we, we maintain the rights, we maintain control. In some people's mind, it isn't, we are maintaining control. It is some are maintaining control. Some's concept, an idea of how this should be set up currently is our idea, not their idea, or of, of what should be done. And, and.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you, you're saying our idea, the council's idea?
Right now, a six.
And their idea being? Utah Open Lands or Utah or Alpine Citizens?
No, let's just leave Utah Open Lands out of it completely, because they're just a, they're just an avenue to do what we're, we, we six.
They're property manager.
Are, are choosing to do. And, and so when we're talking about such a, a significant choice and decision to make on, on this, a supermajority is an important aspect of this. I'm, I'm trying to address what you're, you're saying right here. And how Jason said, supermajority is important because that may, may look like it's a representative, fully representing all aspects of, of the community, meaning that those elected officials were put on, on the council by the voters. And, and, and so they feel like they're getting their voice heard. And because they voted for us and, and that we're making a decision. And, and this one is a very critical decision that impacts future. So I, I'd hate to think that I'm more wise or smart than somebody twenty years from now. But, but, but some of the citizens are feeling like that is, is what's happening. We've got all sorts of different things going on, the pickleball stuff that citizens don't feel like they're being heard. The, the, us five are making a decision that they haven't had a say in. And, and so something like this seems to be so significant that, that, that we're making a decision to to put something in perpetuity, a decision right now for perpetuity that can't change, that I think the community needs more input, needs more, we need to hear more from them.
We will.
And, and the, the, the choices we're even making as far as the core values, that's, I like that. I like the fact that if we can, if we can set up those core values and not, and have everyone buy into that, then it's a community decision. The whole community's saying that this is what it is. And, and then when we come up with a, a, some kind of agreement, if that's what we choose to do, and again, I'm not sure that that's the, the best approach. I think we're working good as a, as a community and keeping and maintaining those kind of our open spaces and requiring people to provide open space for us. We're not diminishing in open space, we're increasing in open space every time we strive to pull in a development. And so, so I think that, that if we could come up with some kind of, of an, an agreement, then a supermajority would be an important aspect or a unanimous in order to make sure it is reflective of the whole community.
Yeah.
And, and, and we hope then that we are reflective of the whole community, or at least the majority.
Yeah, that's right.
Have the hard time with the whole, you keep saying.
Yeah. And, and we have statistically.
At this moment in time, it sort of feels like it's not the whole community, meaning the majority of the community.
But, well, so I will speak for myself when I, because I've run for council now three times and mayor once. So that's a lot of elections and a lot of listening to what people are concerned about. And I will say, and this is part of the debate, I guess, is that the vast majority of people I spoke to while I was campaigning were concerned about how much protection there is over Lambert Park. And the vast majority of the people that talked to me today about this issue are very much in favor of a conservation easement. Now, that's not every citizen. I get that. But I would say that, you know, we've got a fairly good representation from the council here that I think has had much of the same experience. The question that I would pose to people who fear that we're losing control is, well, two questions I would pose is, do you think you have control now? Because there are things going on in the park that, that we're not controlling. And when we do have a conservation easement, what is anybody losing? Is there anybody in town who has something now that would be lost with a conservation easement? Actually, we're protecting the use of the park for public use, public ownership into the future so that people can always use it the way they've been able to use it.
I understand, I understand. Protection is the, the key word. How we go about that is what we're talking about right now. Is, is it, is it, is it a conservation easement that is a form of protection? Or, or is it the other, the way we've been doing it with a supermajority?
I think when we look at surrounding communities, this isn't an outlier. We can look at Provo and Bridal Mill Falls. We can look at Draper, right on our border. A conservation easement isn't this rogue concept. It's actually becoming a community standard and a way to protect in perpetuity these, these natural open spaces. So when I think about it, it's exactly what Greg said when he said, what about near twenty twenty-five, all the things that go wrong, go wrong. But for fifty years, it didn't. Well, that's why we need a conservation easement, because we have one year, one year that, but fifty where we would have, would have wanted to preserve the park. I had a question for Steve, which was, from my understanding, if the Utah Public Lands holds the easement, they also will take on a lot of the legal expenses. Is that correct? If at some time in the future, we are sued by a developer, they step in as the expert and help with those costs in and litigating.
That's my understanding. They defend the easement, and that's basically all they do.
So a question that comes to me is, why doesn't the council want to hold the easement or keep control? Well, we're not the experts. We're city council members. We're not land use experts. And the idea of having somebody step in and bear, and hold the burden of those legal costs, that's to me a pretty big win for the community that we get to have an expert come in. They understand land use. They understand how to protect the community. They understand how to protect Lambert, and they bear the cost. If we can, if we can write it in a way that we're comfortable with, it seems like it's a great way to move forward.
That is a really good point, that the legal, legal representation becomes a, I guess, a benefit. It's insurance. Carla, did you, did you speak your mind? I didn't?
No, I was just, no, when I was asking about mine, I was getting confused who was, who he was referring to with the different entities involved. Can you clarify that?
Okay. Greg?
Yeah. I just keep going back to the, the two kind of goals here. I think one is, we want to protect and preserve the park. The second is not, in doing so, not constraining appropriate uses into the future, for our future in ways that we couldn't possibly have foreseen, or we neglected to see. So, you know, it's, it's about protection, but how we do it in, in what form and the manner of doing so, yeah. But I, I think I'm optimistic that we can, you know, nail down some core priorities and, and then, and, you know, either set some very high bars or, you know, or you know, allow some flexibility in how we manage and utilize.
Do you, does anybody disagree with the concept that we, we pound out those handful of core values? And know that those represent all of our major concerns and priorities? And that we could, we could actually pass that as a resolution for, as council? And then work on the details, which are the aspects of the management plan as a secondary priority? I mean, to me, it feels like if we take it in those steps, that it, it gets, starts getting us there. Because if you try to buy off the whole thing at once, it becomes this overwhelming thing. It has so many different tangents.
Yeah. Well, if you get the main principles, right, then everything else is just, it may be managed through the management plan, which is more flexible, right? Takes a supermajority.
Right. So bearing that in mind, are there any values? You look at the sheet that Steve prepared for us and what I've written up on the board, is there any other core value that is not represented already?
I don't, I don't know if this plays in the core values. I, I always think of situations that we've dealt with that are just out there, just something you thought maybe would never happen. And so I'll, I'll give you one here, and I don't know how this could be handled, you know, within the bounds of a conservation easement. But, so we had the fire in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, we had four floods in sixty days. The Ox Elder drainage came down through Lambert Park. There was no, rarely ever watered. Going through the center block wall of the Josh Haines property, there was like an eighteen or twenty-four inch culvert to take all the water that comes out of that big canyon, you know? That was in the, that was in the county. We didn't really have any say over what was done there or whatever. It was a mistake that it was that small, but that's what it was. So we have the floods. There's nowhere for that amount of water to go. Well, prior to that, a property owner came in and wanted to buy a little piece of property from the city, part of Lambert Park. I just checked it. It was point three acres. A lot of people didn't even know it was part of Lambert Park. They offered a substantial amount of money for it. Like substantial. It's six figures, but not low six figures, okay? City contemplated, went through the process and everything, ultimately said no. Well, it can't, and then for, move forward in time, the floods came, all of a sudden, we've got to get a pipe through the property. It was almost a blessing that the city did not sell it because it gave the city negotiating power with the property owner that really wanted that to do something he was trying to do on his property. He couldn't make it work any other way. In the end, we were able to obtain at no cost to the city an easement through his property to install a sixty and seventy-two inch pipe to protect all those homes down below. And we were given a lower amount for the property, but still a significant amount of money. I, I remember talking to David Church saying, oh, okay, and we'd applied for this grant, we got it. We only had sixty days to build this project, which was very impossible to do. I said, we've got to have this easement. Would we be able to condemn it in this amount of time? He said, there's no possible way that could happen. So we would have the ability to condemn it, but in that timeframe, no. But because we were able to sell that little piece, we were basically able to get this project in with those grant funds we had. And so that's just a kind of an out there example. That's the only one I can think of like that. The things that you may not be able to contemplate happening down the road, so.
That, and that.
And would our hands have been tied in that situation if we had, you know, what we're discussing? Or would there be some element within the easement and the management plan and everything that would allow something like that?
I thought that Utah Public Lands said that under the category of safety, that, that, that could be an allowed modification, that that was the category that can modify it.
Well, I don't think he's just talking about putting the pipes through. It's, you're dealing with selling. That's how they were able to do it. It's a swap, right?
And we don't know if there could have been other, again, that was one solution. We, we can't run two, you know, examples and see what else could have been figured out had they not had that option.
So we, we were looking, in this case, we were looking at every option, and there was not a good one. And we put a pipe between two, three, actually, one very expensive home and two other really nice homes. And to look back now how we were ever able to do that, I, I don't know if we could ever do it.
Yeah.
It just, everything happened to fall into place.
I was part of that decision. And whenever I talk about how we never want to sell Lambert Park, you know, I voted to take that one small sliver because it was thirty feet, I think it's thirty feet wide and ninety feet long or something like that. And it did give us a substantial amount of money. And after we looked at it for a period of time, we realized that it wasn't even a usable part of the park. There's nothing, it had no, no real value because it was on the other side of a ditch away from the park. And so, you know, that was a very, I think, in my mind, a very isolated case, but it's, it is a one-off. You're right.
Yeah, and I wouldn't go right if I didn't bring that situation up to happen for everyone that wasn't involved to consider and, you know.
And I think Jessica brought up the point that we want to change this road up here a little bit, where we have that little, that little culvert that we have to drive over, and that might include part of the park too. So, you know, these are things that we can forecast into it. And again, if there's a, if there's an outlet every five years or ten years that says we will, can reevaluate at least the aspects of the management plan or certain public safety and, whatever you want to call it, issues. Now, I want to get to Bonnie, because Bonnie, you raised your hand a while ago. I'm sorry.
I did. Just so that you're aware that I get all the phone calls regarding this, when the public calls, and I am getting a lot of questions about it, and maybe you guys are not getting all of them. And maybe I should start keeping track of whether they're positive or negative. And they really want to know where they can find the paper of what the easement is and what you guys have written up. And I said, it hasn't been written yet. And so they're, the public is very anxious to read this. And I think you probably ought to have it written up before you vote on it because the people want to read it before you guys vote on it. So I know that that was a really big concern of the public.
Thank you.
I can't imagine voting on it without having the complete document finished. Yeah.
Yeah. There will be, we will have a public hearing when the document is prepared. We'll, we'll release the document for a period of time and then allow, so the public has a chance to, to see it, go over it, and then they can come into the, the public hearing and bring those concerns. So we'll make sure of that. We've had, I point this out in my mayor's message that's going to be released next week, that we've had now three official opportunities for the public to come and voice their opinions and their thoughts. We've had the two open houses. We've had the one public hearing already. I think there was a fourth opportunity in there. We had it as an agenda item. But I just named three because I knew that was safe. And then we'll have at least one more, if not more. There may be several more. It just kind of depends on how things continue. But I think you're right, Bonnie. This has to be digested by the public. The other side of that discussion, though, is I don't want to get mired down in stuff that becomes counterproductive and drags out the process unnecessarily.
Did the, the city sell that land for the church on Country Manor Lane? Was that part of the park at some point?
I don't know.
Yeah. There, I don't think the entire church site was part of it, but there was some transaction, right? So that's right about the time I started. So the details are pretty fuzzy, but I think the city needed some right of way for the extension of Alpine Boulevard. And I think there was some consideration for that. If Long Neil was.
Yeah, Long Neil had mentioned about that and part of Lambert Park up in, above the church.
You know.
And, and in an area where they even talked about doing certain things anyway. He, he talked to me the other day.
Yeah, because not that that's likely to happen again, but could that type of thing happen, right? Is there, is that the type of thing that we would be supportive of, you know? I don't know.
Yeah.
In some unforeseen way, but.
In some ways, that addresses the, one of the concerns I brought up a little earlier, which is the camel's nose in the tent, you know? Well, here's a little piece we could sell, and here's a little thing we could do differently at this park, and before you know it, there's.
I misunderstood that then. Are you, Greg, were you saying, did the city sell the church? I thought it was Long Neil's.
I think.
So hard of it, anyway.
Yeah.
They had to get a little bit from the city, and it could have been a trade. The city got some back.
So what I'd like to be able to do is kind of give Steve any, any other thoughts that you would like to see addressed? If those values up there are representative of your thoughts, or if you'd like to add more to it, so that we have more to add into the framework, because it's time that we do start building the document so that we can get it out there for public consumption.
So this is kind of a lot of what it doesn't have, I think. You know, if one day we're here, I, I don't know, or looking at other ones, I think it does list a lot of what it should contain or does have.
Yeah.
So I think it should list, you know, recreation and nature and so on, and because that's kind of what structures the uses thereafter.
Are you saying that some things need to be added to that list then?
Yeah, so, yes. So we would add that, you know, it is, a core usage is for recreation, for example. Or, yeah, a core value is, is some of those things, you know, preserving open space and
Steve.
Public recreation.
Natural open states, open hosted trails, is that?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. I mean, and, and these are just, you know, bullet points. We can build the language around those things to support it. Jason, is there anything that isn't here that you'd like to see added?
No.
Okay, Carla?
No, but probably the stuff that, you know, that Steve already outlined in the purpose of the easement, you know, like item F, consider, you know, that the park remain in natural vegetative state. And whether we're going to allow new planting or whatnot, and how, you know, I think we need to be very specific on some of this stuff. If I'm understanding correctly. And how, you know, like, natural vegetation as opposed to, like, I know a couple of years ago, didn't we have to remove some weeds that were really invasive in Lambert Park?
Like the star thistles.
Yeah, like, you know, doing that kind of work, and then also, you know, the wildlife that's there. And, you know, I know you mentioned that they'll do that study, but I think that needs to be part of the core value also, is to be able to make sure that we maintain a habitat for the wildlife.
Good, yeah. Well, yeah, and that has, some people appreciate those spaces because it takes the deer off of their lawns. If we have the place for the deer to go, so.
And along those lines of improvements, remember there's a Lambert Park master plan? It was prepared, like around the Bowery. It was uh prepared uh like around the Bowery there, there was uh some planned improvements and like a little amphitheater and some things like that.
Right.
And and I think that's been brought up by Wendy and and by our legal advisors that. You know, if you have a master plan for the park already, that can be incorporated into the management plan. And I think that's appropriate because that captures a lot of the ideas we've had for the park. Because those ideas are multiple use, they're not just biking and tripping and running. They're overnighters with the men's groups and and their volleyball games with, you know, groups that want to go up there.
Can you, can you put down there then on on the recreation area or whatever, multiple use?
Yeah.
Down second from the bottom.
Multi-use recreation area, that's why.
Some, something a little more. O- open to multiple use.
Yeah.
No, just one.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to use lawn here pretty quick, but I want to.
What um. I think, you know, un- like unbettered public access is something we'd have. I wonder if there'd be a point where we might may want to limit, like, let's say it's overuse, right? Like, let's say they're biking when it's muddy, for example, right, we want to be careful that we're not um constraining. Uh or limiting our ability to restrict inappropriate use, right? Let's say it's overuse or.
Yeah.
Damage or people staying there overnight and being loud and who knows, whatever, right?
I don't know if this captures what you're saying, Greg, but with the management plan for use, I mean, and that that could be everything you just stated, you know. You know, using trails when they're muddy, you know, we can eliminate not just weeds with invasive species if we need to. But it is always to be public, it's basically public ownership, public access.
Part of that management, though, Greg, I think is i- i- if I remember here and Wendy, they don't care about. How it's destroyed per se, as they're using it for biking, we're responsible for making sure it's maintained. When someone's destroying it, using the uses that are designated for the property, so. So we still have, we still have the full responsibility to maintain that and and manage it.
Yeah.
For what it's being used for.
But we also need to, we still have the burden of policing and maintenance.
Right.
Yeah.
Did we want to mention anything about motorized vehicles, Steve had put that in the first purposes of easement? The way he worded it is restrict the use of motorized vehicles except as provided below.
Yeah. I wa- I wonder if that gets kind of towards the management plan type of thing.
Maybe.
Because that's where I wonder, you know, could search and rescue helicopter land in there or e-bikes that are evolving so quickly or, you know. I mean, you know, we'd we'd definitely restrict it, but.
It may fall in the management category.
I say to e-bikes, we just keep it to class one, that what we already have in ours.
Yeah. Class one and emergency.
Well, and maintenance vehicles.
Right, yeah.
I wonder is class one going to change, right, it's just more, will that become outdated? It's just the the evolution of those right now, it's just so amazing, in ten years, I can't imagine, or twenty.
I don't think cla- I don't think the classes will change because there is. That they have it set out, yes, do I think they'll get stronger, like in the class three?
Yeah.
I feel like that's where they'll have that range and it will change drastically, I think class one will stay, class one.
But like, like.
It'll be pitilessist.
If you go to Moab or other parts of Southern Utah, they regulate which trails are.
Which class?
Friendly and which ones are not, and so we may want to retain that management aspect as well, just to to be able to control. Because there there are some negative impacts that e-bikes create in certain situations.
That could certainly be part of your management plan.
Yeah. Okay, is there anything else that you feel like we need to discuss before we move on to another topic?
So on this, then we're going to be talking about the ability to change the management plan through a unanimous decision on on time increments. Would we ever want to have an emergency management modification for situations like Shane brought up? Where there is an emergency, I mean, again, the thing that makes me feel safe is if there's a unanimous requirement, not just three out of. Five or even four out of five, but if there's a unanimous thing, then our council is completely aligned in that decision. And sometimes I I wonder if our city would be better off if like, if we have a situation like that, we probably won't, but if it did come up, um should we think about that?
Yeah, I mean, and and I go back to the decision that where we outlawed or eliminated motorized access to the park. That happened because somebody took a load of ammunition and targets up to the shooting area where it's not designated, to be clear. Uh but they they used the park to access it, they fired a fifty caliber weapon, ignited a fire. And suddenly we have a massive fire created by motorized access. And so the council immediately convened and voted unanimously to shut it down to motorized vehicles to help discourage the shooting.
So in the same situation with the conservation easement, we have the flexibility that we could put into it to allow those type of emergency decisions.
Yeah. Could we put an emergency clause in there, Steve?
Sure, sure, document.
Okay.
Yeah, and similar to that, I, you know, because Congress is talking about some sort of, you know, bill for Bonneville Pipeline, you know, um trail. And or shoreline trail and, you know, and with that, it could be that all of a sudden we have control adjacent to the park. Right, and you know, is that, you know, with that, you know, if we pass an ordinance that says, you know. We want to have that latitude to further restrict fires, shooting, um things like that, so that we can prevent fires on that mountain.
And yeah.
That ability to adapt.
And, yep, and that's management plan.
And part of that, yeah. I think it might be helpful to also call out specifics in the easement document itself as far as. Leaving you the flexibility to build a pavilion or some other structure up by where they shoot. Because we know that can help, you know, with the prohibition against shooting.
Good point, right.
Um, some of those things, that could, it could go in the management plan too, but. You don't want to hamstring yourself from ever building a structure if that's necessary to to maintain the public use as it's been used before.
And and the type of str- structure and the footprint of that structure can be limited within that management agreement or that management document.
And I might be missing just a little bit, but but so again, my thing is, I hear Bonnie say that people are calling in are frustrated. You know, I'd very much like to know who they are, where they live, and what the specific issue is behind it, because I've sensed that there's this miscommunication out there that. We're giving it over to like the Sierra Club, this ultra, you know, that they're going to put so many restrictions on us, but. If we can find a way to to show the citizens that, yeah, we are doing this, these are our core values, but. We can still, you know, within these rules, make the modifications, we need to make sure, I mean, I want to just show that we have control.
Right, that's really the message is, you know, for those who say we're giving up control, observe the process. Because the process is us exercising control. You know, and 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 we're going to write in stipulations that allow us to continue to exercise control. We're simply trying to set this aside as a permanent area for recreation and natural settings. And it creates an asset for the city and for our lifestyle that we want to have protected. And so, again, to your point, Jason, we are exercising control right now in constructing a document that is user friendly. And that is a win-win for both the city and its assets and the people who live in the city to have a recreational outlet.
So just to clarify a little, clarify that, say, we had an emergency meeting like we had before with Shane where we have to. Potentially sell a property to someone else to be able to trade a property for someone else, something like that. Even though up here it says never sold for private use, um would we ever give um. This maintenance body or the ability to do that, even if it's up here? And I'm just thinking that the very unlikely event that something like that happens before over time restraint, there's a danger up there. Could we sell? That ten thousand square feet that we sold?
Yeah, I think you, we could, we could write it in so that we could, but then you're really opening up a Pandora's box there.
Yeah, it seems like it would be limited in this form unless we created some, but you'd want to have it be so controlled and so narrow. I guess, if you were to do that, right?
And it would have to maybe, maybe there are triggers, you know, there is threat to life and property, you know, if if we don't do it. There is uh, you know, ultimate, and it and it would have to be in increments, increments that are so small that it would be almost inconsequential.
Well, I don't even know if Shane's example would be, I mean. From my understanding, what you're saying, Shane, is that you had a sixty day limit to use the grant. So if you didn't use the money, the grant would be out, but you could still condemn the property without having to sell Lambert Park, correct?
Yeah.
So it's just, be able to get, okay.
Then we would have the expense of the project that we had the grant for, plus the expense of purchasing the easement.
Property.
But that doesn't mean we can't do the project, it just means it gets more expensive because we chose to protect the the park against expand or a diminishing sale.
Yeah, in that example, we had the four floods in sixty days, so it was, you know.
It was a pretty bad situation.
It was a bad situation.
But to your point, Carla, you know, the lack of options forces additional creativity. If we did say, no, we're just not going to sell anything ever, then we'd have to get more creative in the future condemnation. Things get more expensive, things like that, so I can see it go either way. Okay, Steve, do you feel like you have enough to to continue to create the document?
Sure, and just to be, just to be clear, uh we have not created a document because we're waiting on Utah Open Lands to give us their initial draft. I understood that was going to happen today, it hasn't happened.
Yeah.
So we'll keep on them. Uh I suspect that we will, you know, given what you've told us this evening. We will be making significant changes to that initial draft and then we'll bring you something back and obviously. Uh before any vote is taken, you're going to want to see a document that you're comfortable with. And so we'll try to, we'll try to adapt it to everything that we've heard tonight, try to harmonize the input that you've given us and uh and we'll bring something back to you.
Terrific, thank you very much, Steve, appreciate your help. I appreciate Steve and Craig for making themselves available for meetings with me over the last few days. Oh, weeks, sorry, my voice seems to be going, not good because I have a thing. All right, um let's move on to the rest of our agenda. Let's talk about, uh, let's look at reports and, sorry, public comment. Thought ahead of myself, uh we reserve time in each meeting for public comment, if you could please come up and state your name and your address. Please stay within the three minute uh timeline to express your thoughts. And avoid any topic that is on tonight's agenda, we'll wait for those topics to come up. Allow uh public input if we have time, so go ahead and open it up to public comment. Everybody staying put, so we'll move on, we're bringing on end of public comment and move on to reports and presentations.
Ma- mayor, can we do the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, I completely overlooked that. Thank you.
I just am anxious to make my.
I'm just going to make two modifications over quick, Bonnie, um first modification is page one, um line forty-five. If you had just, doesn't really, she asked the council if they would rather have it, say, preserve animal rights and maintain legal level of regulations, you think it's simple enough to say. I would say just take out that first part, um he asked the council, I don't even know, I don't know what that's even saying there.
It was, it was lenient instead of legal, I believe.
Okay, yeah.
It was, it was correct.
Okay, so did you already make that modification, thank you, because I was reading it, I was like, what? So maybe you made this one too, on page eight, line eight, where it says, Carla Merrill moved to reduce the road from thirty feet to twenty-six feet, it should say. Tapered from thirty feet down to twenty-six feet as opposed to change the whole.
Thank you, Jason, any other amendments to the?
I had made, I had made some, uh one specific that wasn't even in the minutes, there was actually Jessica. Um talked about the goals or. Talked about uh mixed use. And it wasn't clear in the minutes at all, I had had Bonnie go back, listen to it and insert. What Jessica had clarified and clear and pointed out.
Great.
On that one, a significant change in that, the other changes were uh were here, were there.
Jessica, did you agree with those changes? Okay.
So. And I don't know, do you need to say anything on the truck? I'd make a motion, make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with the changes that are noted by Jason Thielen and myself.
A second, okay, we have a motion by Lon, a second by Jason Thielen, uh any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously? Where's Chief Patton?
He's on vacation.
So you're here to introduce yourself?
I am.
Well, please come on up. Pleasure to have you in our meeting tonight, thanks for coming.
Actually, Patton's out of town, so I guess I get to introduce myself. My name's Jake Beck and I just was recently hired as the deputy fire chief. And uh spoke a bit about me, I I spent about twenty-two years in the neighboring department. Um before I came over, I currently live in the north side of Lehigh. And uh I'm really, really excited to be here and I'm humbled the opportunity to serve the residents of Alpine, thank you.
Thank you for being here, give us five reasons why Alpine is better than Lehigh. Five reasons. I could, I could probably come up.
You could really put him on the spot and say Highland.
That's true. Thank you.
We're really glad to have you on the department, thank you for coming tonight, we'll give you all the support we can, let us know what we can do for you.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
And I'd like to point out that our new chief is doing such a great job of really rebuilding the morale within the department and creating a sense of wanting to be there. We've got people who have come back, who left the department before, and we have people who are coming from the other departments and that's a real mark of. Success for the culture of our fire department and I just really love the the morale that's been building in in the department. It's been there for the police department and we have it now in the fire department, it's a really good situation for our first responders.
Yep, and and Chief Beck's added to that in the short time that he's been here in that rebuilding and kind of.
Yeah.
Getting things back where they need to be, so.
Yeah, feels good, thank you. All right. Brian? And I'd like to thank Brian publicly for being patient with all my after hours and weekend calls. Sorry about that, it'll end soon.
You're, anytime, I'm happy to take your, any of your phone calls or texts anytime. Um something I've done for, going on almost three decades now, so I kind of got used to it, so. Um I appreciate the opportunity, I will be brief and I want to make sure we cover the topic that the mayor wanted me to discuss tonight and that was. What we are doing as a department, what law enforcement is doing in general uh in Utah and across the nation to. Deal with individuals that might be experiencing a mental health crisis. You're seeing a lot of this in the news lately, you're seeing a lot of um. Things that are are coming to the forefront and I think we're seeing a lot of that in our society today where more individuals. For whatever reason, we can get into debate politically on why this is happening and maybe it's just something that's always happened and now it's coming to the forefront. But individuals that are having a mental health crisis. This is something that that came on my radar about three or four years ago. Uh we'd been familiar with it before that, but about three or four years ago, we were starting to see that. Even here in in Alpine and in Highland, we deal with individuals that are having a crisis and um. It's important to to differentiate between those that are dealing with the mental health crisis and those that you are dealing with. That are, that involve criminal activity and it's different. Uh even though the behaviors are quite similar sometimes, especially when we're dealing with somebody that has autism. And might be a little belligerent or might be having a mental episode, that they act very similar to those that might be high on. Uh you know, methamphetamine or cocaine or or might be experiencing something that might be induced by some type of narcotic. Um they're very similar behaviors when we're talking about individuals with autism and those that um. That are, that might be, might have to in- induced it. With a, again, with some type of narcotic, there are differences in there, but there are some things that that kind of confuse officers into trying to differentiate between one and the other. Uh is very important, um about four years ago, it became important to me as the chief to start sending our officers to what we call crisis intervention training. And there's a crisis intervention team and there are two different um. And there's a crisis intervention team and there are two different um, places that we can send them here in Utah and what I wanted to do four years ago. Was to, to have all of our officers trained in crisis intervention. We started that along the path and it was one of those things that um, was, training was offered periodically and so we would get an officer trained here. An officer trained there and we got about halfway through. Uh, until about the spring of twenty twenty and you can all imagine what happened in twenty twenty. We all know what happened in twenty twenty is COVID hit. And that in essence shut all of that type of training down. Uh, and now we're starting to ramp up again. Uh, between attrition and officers that we lost to other agencies, some of those officers that we had trained have left and gone elsewhere. And so we're about, almost half of our officers are trained with crisis intervention. And this is a week long cla- class and course that they'll go in and they will actually um, learn the types of things that uh. To recognize and to deal with, with individuals that experience a cr- crisis. Part of the goal is to train officers the proper methods of crisis response and resolutions. Developing effective crisis response systems and advocating for accessible behavior health systems and programming. We've seen over the last few years, well, the, the last year and a half, a, a cry for more mental health response. Law enforcement, if you've been watching the news lately, and that's something that we're working on integrating or having a, a resource for officers to be able to. To utilize when dealing with mental health. This past year, in the twenty twenty-one legislative session, uh, House Bill uh, one sixty-two was passed. And what this is, is it requires officers to receive a minimum of sixteen hours of training. To include mental health crisis response, yes, the escalation self, um, and arrest control. Uh, so that's something that we're focusing on this year. Those of you who are on the public safety board. Will know that we increased that budget slightly for training this year to be able to, to access this type of training as we know. Now that it's going to be a requirement that they, officers receive this specific type of training. In addition to the forty, uh, the forty hours that they already received, uh, that was going to be an additional cost, so I appreciate. You increasing that budget, so we were able to do that. So far this year, each officer has received um, training on autism. Uh, this was a, quite an eye opening experience for all of us, um, in dealing with and, and how to understand and recognize those. That might be autistic and um, we do have members of the community that, that. Uh, do you have autism and we, we encounter them from time to time. Each officer's received that training um, so far this year and will continue to work on that and moving forward, so. Those are kind of the goals that we have. Some of the things that we're already doing, uh, we were very aware of this before it became a hot topic in the media. And that's something that we've worked on, so I will entertain any questions if anybody has any.
I have a quick question. Uh, how often, and I don't know if you know the statistical answer to this question. Uh, how often does your officers find themselves in a situation that either has or could turn violent? Because of mental illness.
I, I don't want to get into. Into specifics, but it's becoming more often now than it has been in the past. Matter of fact, I just had a report that came across my desk this morning where we had. Two officers that were dealing specifically with that and um, this just happened two days ago. And it's something that thankfully, the, the officers are aware of. They're very keen on, on what to look for and. Unfortunately, the officers had to use some physical restraints in order to keep this person from into hurting themselves and, and family members. Uh, but that's just the nature of, of the business. Uh, if we can. If we can stay away from using any type of force or restraining individuals, we will. That's more of a last resort, but when they start harming themselves for others, the officers need to intercede physically, so.
Is there an age that, that's too more typical?
No, it, it spans. You know, seven to ninety-seven.
You certainly have to appreciate the situation you guys are put into, that you have to make some pretty difficult decisions pretty quickly. As those situations escalate. It's a difficult job.
You're correct. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll let you get on with the agenda. I think we'll be done in ten minutes, right?
Oh, sure, yeah, we're gonna hustle right through these items. Okay, uh, let's move on to the agendas, uh, agenda items. Uh, first one, Austin, Alpine Animal Hospital.
Okay, all right, uh, so the Alpine Animal Hospital, hospital is looking to do a, an addition onto the building. Um, here on the screen, we have kind of an overhead aerial view of the exit of the property as it currently exists. If the city council might recall, probably about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago. They came in with a proposal to do a uh, dog boarding facility, so. Uh, that was the plan, then COVID happened and their plans changed and so. Um, they don't want to, they're not, they're not going to be building that dog boarding facility, but they want to just expand their current uh, facility. And kind of offer the same services that they already do.
Or treatments.
Some more treatment rooms, um, and stuff like that. This is uh, just for the purpose of the record, it's four twenty-four South Alpine Highway. It's located in the business commercial zone. The property is on approximately one acre. There, they would be doubling their square footage, um, so. Going from twenty-five hundred to fifty-eight hundred square feet approximately. That being said, so the, the, let me pull up the site plan now. And so you can see the footprint of this. The building does meet the setback uh. Requirements, so we do require a minimum of ten feet in between commercial building properties. So uh, they show ten, ten feet, five inches here.
But that's, that's actually the, the one and only point that's within that distance. The rest of it fades.
Yeah, everything else, yeah. So it's really minimal impact and that also to their neighbor that they, that they do kind of border. That's a part of their facility that isn't used for things, so. We don't anticipate it being, you know, much of a impact on the neighbor uh, in a negative way or anything like that, so it does meet our requirements. They, by making the building bigger, they do, are required to have more parking spots and so. You can see here, this is a modified uh, parking plan. They're showing thirty parking stalls. They're actually only required to have twenty off-street parking stalls, so they have uh, plenty of parking. Um, that's something that they're choosing, wanting to do here.
I've forgotten what that building is, that they would be eliminating that smaller structure.
Uh, that we saw in the air, overhead view.
Yeah.
It was some kind of, it was a shed, that'll be demolished to create more parking and uh, also kind of a base scenario for drainage. Uh, let's see here, so. Uh, so we do a full site plan analysis on this to make sure it meets all of our codes. Um, and so other things that we look at are like screening. Screening is a requirement where you have to. Have a barrier in between uh, business and a residence. There are no residential, residential properties here, so screening is not required. The landscaping, we do require to- twenty percent landscaping in the business commercial zone. Even after this addition, they'll still have fifty-three percent of the property landscaped, so they're well above the minimum. Um, trash is a requirement. If you'll look on the screen here, you'll see item seven. They're going to be putting in kind of a fenced in area for, for their dumpsters that will be stored on that north. Uh, I guess that would that be the north?
North west.
West corner of the property. Um, the height of the structure, let's just go to a visual here so you can see what the structure will kind of look like. What is proposed to look like, so on the left-hand side of the screen is kind of a rendering of what the exit, that's the existing facility. And then everything to the right with the landscaping in front of it would be the new um, addition. The height of the structure is twenty feet, four inches. They can go all the way up to thirty-four feet, so it meets our high risk requirements. As far as design goes, they're looking to just, they're hoping to just kind of maintain the current look of the building. Um, on the easel that you have in front of you here is kind of a sample of the color. It's approximation, it's actually a little bit darker, I think the actual color, but they're going to try and match what the current building already looks like. And then, so look, going back to your screen, if you look, you'll see the bottom of the building is. It's actually a brick on the current building and so they're going to do their best to try and match that same brick. That's a proposal. Uh, along the entire front of the bottom half of the building. They would landscape that area in front of the building there with some shrubs and trees. And um, and then they're showing kind of some architectural elements there. You can see in the roof line, they have that little. Window thing up in the roof line that kind of gives it, gives it some unique characteristic and. Kind of differentiates it, so it doesn't look so simple. Um. The planning commission, uh, let's see here, let me, oh yeah, so also, um, going back to the site plan. They are required, required to provide lighting for this parking area. Um, and they did provide a. A light plan that does meet our city standards and requirements. One of the things that, that should be in the motion is that they, they do need to put in the city standard light fixtures that we have. So we went to kind of a more dark sky compliant, one that shines down on the ground and so we would expect them to install those here.
Does that include, I've had ones before where we require them to have those decorative? Ones that say Alpine on it?
Yeah, it's though, yep, it's those ones, so like, just across the street from, on the south of the building here, you can see a sample, that's the most. That's the modern, the newest one that we have, so they would put those same lights in. Let's see, okay, and then the storm retention basin area that I mentioned earlier that would be. Where that old shed used to be, um, they do show that that's, that's capable of a hundred year storm event. So it does meet our, our drainage requirements in that regard.
So that's right behind the, where the trash bins are going to be located?
Yeah, let me see if there's, it might be another better. I think this is the drainage plan here, so you can see that. You can see those contour lines. It's in that northwest corner. Um, and so the planning commission did recommend to approve this uh, with three conditions, one. That they extend brick along the front of the building, so the original proposal didn't have brick going along the entire front. And so that was a rec, that was a recommendation from the planning commission. There was also, there also is an existing fence where the addition would go and so the planning commission recommended that that fence be removed and landscaping be put in. Which we saw in the um, rendering. Then um, the planning commission recommended with the condition that the city standard lights be um. Be used in the parking lot. So that's kind of a summary of what they're asking to do here tonight. We do have a representative, um, if you have any questions for him.
That building that needs to be removed, typically we've seen on most all the others, we approved that that's part of the requirements. Is that? Not on there, because it's just going to be.
It's kind of a foregone conclusion, I guess.
That, that in order to meet the plan, that's going to have to come out.
Yeah, it'll have to happen. I mean, it couldn't hurt to add that in the motion. Usually we do that on, for sure, like on. Major buildings like a home or something, you definitely want to have that in there.
I, I, just a question, my comment. If they're going to make plan work, they're going to have to remove it.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion, please, Jason. Um, I'll make a motion that. I make motion, move. That, that, I make a motion of the animal hospital. Alpine Animal Hospital edition be approved. As proposed with the addition that the existing shed. Be removed as a condition and that the parking lot lighting meets city standards, which are the Alpine decorative lights. Okay, a motion by Jason Thielen. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it. As far as the uh, as proposed, what the planning commission had recommended, cricket be extended.
Right.
So that. So uh, Jason, you're adding that the bricks is extended in the front fence move.
I apologize. Yeah, it's everything the planning commission said with the addition of those two items, the shed being removed and just a little more detail on the lighting. Did you capture that, Bonnie? Okay. All right, we have a motion by Jason Thielen, which has been seconded by Lon Watt. Any further question on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good to see your business expanding. All right, uh, we'll move on to the next item, uh, a new building in the commercial district. Uh, Austin, would you like to introduce this? And I'm going to step away for just a moment, so Lon, would you please?
Hold my microphone. Okay, so this is for the Links and Kings building. Um, on your screen here, you'll see this is uh, Main Street. This is just across from Legacy Park, just south of City Hall here where we're at. This is the old market. It's right, just right, has a zero setback, the current building that's just right on the sidewalk. Um, and so the proposed new building would be on the back end of this property. You can see on the back here, behind where all that parking is. It's just kind of a dirt patch and there's a tree there. That's um, the, the location of where this proposed building would go. Um, so. This is sixty-two South Main Street. It is in the business commercial zone. The uh, property that you see here on your screen is point six four acres. Uh, the proposed size of the building that would be built here would be fifty-five hundred square feet approximately. The property does have an access easement, um, which is something that should be pointed out here, so. Basically, this enti- the entire north end of the property and I'll just, we'll, we'll test it out and see if our annotation is working tonight. Maybe. Okay, so this area here along the top of that property is an access easement. It's a, it's fifty-eight hundred square feet, twenty-two feet wide, takes up point, zero point one three four acres of the total property. Um, that access provides um, access for this home here. There's another property here and then a third property back here, so all those three other properties that are adjacent to. Links and King's property all have access through the easement. The reason we're bringing this up is because it does play, come into play with some of their landscaping and, and other requirements, so. Um, let me pull up the site plan here. So this is the site plan, uh, turn off that annotation. Okay, so we're looking, this is, north is to your right, west is the top of the screen here. Um, and so this is the proposed building. You can see that it has a twenty-two rear setback. A ten-foot side setback on the south side, which is the left-hand side there. Those both meet our requirements in the zone, so. It should be explained what the purpose of this building will be, so um, let me go to a. Rendering of the building. So this building would primarily be a garage area on the lower level. And then a living space on the upper floor. Um, the reason why that comes into play is if you build a residence in the business commercial zone, it does have to meet the setbacks. Of the TR ten thousand zone and so this, this structure, the way that they've located it on the property, it does meet those requirements.
But, but how did the garage affect that?
So the garage is going to be, might be used, and they can clarify, I'm not positive, but it might be used for business, part of the business as well as. For the residents above, so it's kind of mixed use in that way. Um, and so that's why that garage comes into play.
Yeah, and I mean, I think this is a nice concept, but what is the part of our code that allows? Is, is it that you can have TR ten thousand within um, business commercial? Or what is, what is it that allows it on the same? You know, structure or plaque?
Yeah, so, and if you read our permitted uses, it specifically says that a residence is allowed on the same. Site or in the same building as a business.
One, one resident, is a, a residence, is that what it's a?
Yeah, we can pull it up here once, I'll pull it up.
And do you recall, is the expectation that it's one residence or could it be multiple?
I, I don't remember it singling out a single residence, but let's, let's pull it up here.
Let's see, three point zero, seven point zero two zero permitted uses. Residential structures located. Residential structures located within or on the same premises as a permitted or conditional commercial use. Both residential and commercial buildings will be considered main buildings and will be required to meet the main building setbacks. When on the same premises.
Yeah, so that's our ordinance. Yeah, this is three point zero seven point zero two zero. Point nine.
Another thing you said concerned me a little bit, when they ask, can you put multiple residents in it, and you said, yes?
Um well, reading this, let's see, I mean, I don't know how you would interpret that, maybe Craig would be the legal eye here to. See how he would interpret that if it could have more than one residential structure.
Not structured, but uh facilities within one structure, that's what we're talking about, are we not?
It could be, yeah, so for example, we have the Ezra Lee Building, which has a residential unit in it. Located within the the building, which is a business commercial building. In this case, it would be a residential use on the same property as a business commercial use. Which is the primary use of the property.
Is there a limit to the number of structures you can have in the business commercial on a single plot or a single lot?
No, just as long, they have to meet the setbacks.
Okay, as long as they meet the setbacks, you can squeeze in as many as on this. They meet the setbacks, the parking, off street parking requirement.
And then the landscaping.
Honestly, the landscaping is the most restrictive thing, because they have to maintain that twenty percent landscaping, and so. You have to leave, you know, twenty percent open, very green.
So, but as I read this here, right, you made all the other standards, you could have multiple residences, I mean detached or stacked or. Whatever, right?
It appears that way, yes, in this plural.
So people can create apartment complexes on, in the business commercial for offensive purposes, I mean with multiple.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be multifamily dwellings, though, we wouldn't allow that, even, cause it is.
It still has to be part of the CR one hundred, so I mean, it's part of that zoning, I mean, I'm sorry, not one hundred.
Yeah, so the underlying zone is the tier residential zone is the tier ten thousand zone, so.
So you're effectively limited to one, or potentially, depending on the size of the lot.
Yeah, I mean, we, so in the tier ten thousand zone, we would allow an accessory apartment. So you could in theory have two dwellings on one property in the tier ten thousand zone. So I don't know if that, how that would.
You could have two dwellings, you could have.
But it's one.
Have an accessory apartment, one building with two families in it.
As long as one is owner occupied.
Correct, owner occupied.
But in this case, there's two structures, right, it's a point six four lot, right?
Commercial building, no, it's business building, not a residential structure currently.
In the building, yeah. How does it play into the fact that um that this could be a business use as well? I mean, you mentioned, is that playing to the fact like parking, for example, obviously, we're only doing two parking spots for this, right?
For the residential, yeah, so yes, they would have to have two parking spots.
Residential, but it could be used for business, do we just simply defer to residential, or do we go to business on it?
Well, so all but, all, all buildings in the business commercials are are dicta- parking is dictated by the use. So if they were to change this into a business in the future, if if I think that's what I'm understanding what you're trying to say.
Because you said that the garage could be used for part of the business, so that makes that a business use, so are you taking into consideration? The square footage of that when you're considering the number of parking stalls required for this?
So when we looked at the parking required, we looked at the existing building.
Yeah, you're gonna have to look at the garage space now.
But we did not count the garage square footage as a, in the parking, and I, and I don't know how.
Wouldn't that be a parking stall?
It is a parking stall, so it is an.
Potentially for business, I mean, obviously, yeah, if this is.
It would be.
If this is next door to the um. I don't know if this is Lawrence's. And if that's the occasion, obviously, they have autos repairs there, I don't know what you're applying by that. That the parking, that the garage could be used for um business purposes.
Yeah, what I'm saying is it's part of the Links and Kings business, which is a goods manufacturer.
Right, we know that, but when you were describing the new building.
Mechanic or something like that.
Right, no, but I guess like I need clarification on what you said earlier. When you were going over, you said, oh, the garage can be potentially used for the business, and if that's.
They may use it for storage or something, that that's what I understood from their proposal.
Right, so if they're gonna use it for the business, then the parking needs to be recalculated.
But this has twenty stalls with it, with ten more.
They they have, they have ten additional stalls of excess, so yeah, if we get to the off street parking here, they have.
Eleven extra, right?
Seventeen off street parking stalls were required, but that again, we didn't factor, we we just looked at the new building as a residence. But um if you calculate that in, so if we wanna calculate that in, it's four parking stalls per thousand square feet. So um.
You'd need twenty. Twenty four.
So they're twenty one, twenty five, so they would have to have twenty five stalls. They do have twenty eight stalls, so they're still, if they, if you wanna, if you looked at it that way, that the bottom was. An expansion of the Links and Kings. They would, they would still meet the parking, off street parking requirement.
So just as remarked to council, we'll need a motion to to go further, uh if we go beyond the next fifteen minutes, fourteen.
The footprint, I'm not sure what the footprint is, I just know the total square footage, we do have the uh architect here that could comment on that, maybe.
Let's take a, just two or three minutes, if you could maybe come and clarify a couple of things for us, thank you.
Patrick Todd, and happy to answer any questions you guys have for that, so, not exactly the architect builder, we are the designer, so. Um okay, as far as the footprint, I think he mentions around five thousand feet, you're a double stack building, he's counting the garage already into that footage. So you're around twenty high, high twos on the, on that level of the building area, so where you'll be living, the living space. It's designed as a single living space, it's not designed as multiple, it's not rental, it's it's for one living space. On the plan, the full set of plans is in the design as well. So the question of the city council here is obviously, as as Austin probably going, that you're asking for the um. The easement portion, the five thousand eight hundred seventy three, to not count against your landscaping plan. On that, I mean, I'm trying to understand as I was looking through that, obviously, that asphalt's there for a reason. It services people coming in and driving into the. Property, be able to park on the per- property. I'm trying to understand why um we would say that. Driveway, so to speak, even though it is nice, doesn't count in the landscaping percentages. If you'd like me to, I can answer any questions, but specific, that's a pretty open question, but. The easement along that whole north side is is not capable for him to do anything upon it, so to add any landscape to that section. That's why we say that it really shouldn't count towards the land, you got point six four, I think is the lot. Um and with that twenty feet all the way across the north side uncontrollable, you can't put anything on it, you can't change it, can't modify it. The landscape plans propose, as you guys can see, is has been modified, it's it's grabbing every bit of landscape this lot has, the building. That's existing, the setbacks and everything, I think it's historic, so it's been there for a long time, you know, don't allow it to have any more space than it does. I'm, it's set up on the sidewalk, so to open up and take that back section and open up those areas to reach the twenty percent. I can't grab any more of that north side, I can't do anything with the north side, it's basically a road, right, it's an access for three separate properties, so it's a road, so you can't landscape a road. So. And it's not just a road, it's your driveway, it's your parking lot, right? Parking those parking stalls up there to the north of the existing building without using that paved um twenty two foot easement. We can't get in as long as well as the other three as well, the three. So basically. Saying, if that wasn't an easement, it would still be asphalt. Well, but I could, I could limit that to my use, meaning I could modify that, wind it, put some landscape rollers into it, do some different things along those lines. You're talking about, I think it was additional, if you take that back out, I think we're like fourteen percent, I can easily get six percent along that edge. Just taking six feet the whole way and making that a planner, which you would do at your normal residence, you would create a buffer between your fence line. And your grass or whatever else, or you, so it's not achievable in this situation. But certainly could be in an aspect of a normal homeowner scenario.
Is there any room along the north side of the existing building to put in some landscaping? I mean, he's trying to capture.
It's shown in there, north side is got a little.
The diagonal parking spots are along.
Right here, maybe, this is the planning commission also mentioned that they.
How, how much does that add?
It doesn't add add very, I mean, they're still well below the, if we don't count the easement as. If we count that as part in into the landscaping calculations, it doesn't get them to twenty percent.
But I think adding at least that much adds more a greener sort of Main Street there, you know?
Yeah, the the planning commission would like suggested. That the, that the owner consider making those first two stalls off of Main Street into some kind of a landscaping area. Little little shrubs and shrubs and trees in there.
Does the planning commission know that they can ask them to do that and require them to do that, or I mean, it seems like there's, they do.
So the planning commission was, was careful in the way that they looked at this, because. They wanted to look at this as it's an all or nothing, like either we are or we are not considering that access easement as part of their landscaping. And so if we don't consider that in into their landscaping calculations, they do have twenty percent landscaping. If we don't consider it into their calculations, then they only have sixteen percent landscaping, and so. The way that they looked at it is, if we're not gonna count that, they in theory meet the twenty percent, and so how can we require any more of them? If they're already meeting the twenty percent landscaping, and so then their idea was, well, we just will ha- highly encourage them. To uh landscape that area off of Main Street, that was the way that they worded it in their logic or thinking on that.
I think we can require it, right?
We're not against it, I know, I'm not a turn, but just so we're clear, we're we're debating something that. We're fine to put some flowers and some shrubs up front and guard a little bit of the front of the building, it's whether or not that need meets the handicap spots or. Form versus function, and just making sure that we don't step over ourselves there, so. Thank you very, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say, ask a question?
Yes.
This is a private easement, I don't think we have any standards for how, why that easement is. Why can't the applicant go ask the other three beneficiaries of the easement to reduce the easement by five feet? And put in a landscaping strip?
Makes sense.
Just a thought. Twenty two, I think, Carla, uh but you're not gonna have traffic going back and forth very often.
It is still pretty tight, it still is pretty tight.
Probably need to come up and speak up here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you're gonna make any comments, they'll have to be made into the mic, so you can record it, thank you.
Well, and what I think. The idea of having more landscaping at the front.
I was gonna say.
Yes, just I would wanna make a comment on this, so I, in my opinion, like, part of the the reason why we have a landscaping requirement is to add beauty to Main Street. And so if all the landscaping's in the back and you can't even see it.
And I was gonna add along that fence, you already see trees in the yard next to that property, that's not where you have. The flat surfaces, it's right along Main Street where the sidewalk goes to the street, to the building, so anyway, we can add. Um some softening through landscaping, that seems to be the, where the city would benefit.
Let's take one minute, if you want to make some comments.
I'm the owner of the property.
Okay.
And so right now, that back, the back section um is used by James every day for overpark, for commercial use parking. And so there is quite a bit of up and down there, I don't love it, um because it is, it's a little bit. When I'm with my kids and I, I'm planning on living there with my children.
Okay.
And so I don't love the idea, but I I mean, I don't know whether we could, there's already a strip probably two feet wide along the the house there, which. I'm planning on ripping the rocks out and putting trees along there anyway, for extra landscaping, which is not on the plan, just to beautify, in fact, I'm planning on. Ripping out that ugly rock wall and doing the new rock that we, which will match the building, we do wanna beautify the area, but it is. To say it's not used much would not be accurate, is what I'm saying, that easement right now. And I've been to the s- the county, I've been here, and no one can tell me what that, the the specifics of that even actually are. There's no, I cannot find the information, we got a a lawyer with the title company trying to find that out for us right now, but we can't, I can have not been able to find it. Anything on that easement other than that easement exists, no one can give me any details on that.
So that easement isn't recorded anywhere?
It's recorded, but that's all, it's recorded, it doesn't give any specifics to it or anything, we can't find any information on it.
It doesn't identify who holds the easement.
No, oh, it's on my property, that's all I know.
Right.
Um but the specifics of it, it's use, it's defined use, I cannot find the information.
Is there any requirements, I guess I should ask, Austin, is there any requirements, Austin? For uh frontage on this, we're talking about back setbacks, and that is, we're building another building on there. It, I I guess it meets the front setback, cause it's setback so far, but the existing building, is there any reason why?
Is there, no, because it's, it's technically, it's gonna be on the same utilities as the other building, so it's, it's not, we're not making a new property. Yeah, it's accessory to the Links and Kings facility.
I'm going to entertain a motion for extension of our meeting, uh as required by ordinance.
I'll make a motion to extend our meeting to um finish the agenda items listed this evening, including staff reports and council communication. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by, by Jessica, seconded by Carla, uh any questions on the motion?
Is there dinner?
All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Did you, did you vote aye? Okay, the motion passes four to one, the traditional objector has been recorded.
Mayor, I'll make a motion on uh Links and Kings hind door building.
Okay.
We're ready, um I move that the site plan for Links and Kings hind door building be approved as proposed. With the following conditions, that the city allow the access easement area to not be included in calculating the landscaping requirements. And that the front two parking stalls be converted to landscaping.
Okay, we have a motion made by Greg Gordon, any, uh do we have a second to that motion before we entertain questions?
Yeah, yeah, so um.
First, we got a second to the motion, oh, sorry, we need a second on the motion and then we can discuss.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, we have a second by Lon Watt, Lon, did you have a question?
The comment was made, though, by the gentleman about, does it have the handicap, handicap parking? Would it be required to have handicap parking right there? So if we, if we stip- stipulate that's landscaping, are we overriding something else that should have?
Are we violating IDA requirements? Mayor, if I may.
Accessibility in the back.
Okay, Austin, if I may, yeah, so we we did discuss this in planning commission, um and so it came up that in the business commercial zone. Prior to our um amending the ordinance. Year or two ago, we actually didn't allow any parking in the front fifteen feet. Uh, the only way you can put parking in the front fifteen feet of a property is through via exception. And so. With that being said, the ADA spots would be where they would be located on other properties in it. So it, yes, it would be further for an ADA individual to get to the front door, but does it not, but it does meet our ordinance.
Okay, good. Thanks for the question, Lon. Any other questions on the motion?
So did you say that you would not count the easement in the twenty percent?
Right, but still require the front two stalls to be converted to landscaping. Basically, it's as proposed.
I, can we do that if they meet the twenty percent in other places if we don't count it? I think we have to not recognize. The easement to be able to require.
That include the easement to require the first two parking spots. Otherwise, they're not required to because they already have the twenty percent. As proposed by their plan.
Well. So if we don't recognize it, that forces the landscape to go more toward the the front of the property, which is what the intention of the ordinance was.
But, yeah, but they still don't made it even with those. And so I guess that's the reason why we wouldn't.
But I think Craig Craig actually said that you could add, you could require them to landscape those front two spots, even if you don't.
Okay, then I'm good. As long as we can, that would be great.
Okay.
And why was the li- lighting plan submitted for residential property? And this is lighting plan was for the new building was submitted and approved.
The, so we require lighting plans on all business commercial site plans. They have to show that on the site plan.
Even if it's a house?
If it's, I mean, if, well, it's because this is already on a business commercial property. It's an accessory to a business commercial. But in theory, if it was just a home in the business commercial zone, we wouldn't, I don't think we would require a lighting plan on that.
At least we have their homes in the commercial district, which you do not have light plans. Well, they're older, probably weren't required to anyway, but.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any, without any further question on the motion, we will go to a vote. All in favor of the motion. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, um. Do you mind if we move, can I flip items C and D?
I was gonna suggest.
Yeah, I I should have done this a while ago. Jeff, I'm sorry we've kept you waiting. I hope you've enjoyed the adrenaline rush of our meeting. Um, I'd like to uh move on to the nomination for our planning commission, our next member. And this is, I'll remind and clarify for our nominee, uh, that this is a seat. Excuse me, that was that was vacated. And it has about a year and a quarter left in the in the term. So this is a term that goes through to twenty twenty-two. And terminates in twenty twenty-one. And of course, at that time, it can be renewed. Based on the willingness of the 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 person who is serving in that position. I've had a couple of conversations with Jeff, Jeff Davis. Uh, he came at the recommendation of our sitting planning commission chair. And Jeff has uh checks a lot of the boxes. Uh, he is a civil engineer. Is familiar with the process in dealing with municipalities. He has a specialty in water usage. And has a lot of the uh the traits that we're looking for in a planning commission member. Including the ability to work through the process and recognizing the importance of city ordinances and adhering to those ordinances as recommending part of the potty. Um, with uh with further uh ado, I would ask Jeff to come forward and maybe field a couple of questions. Maybe start by introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about you and uh your exposure to Alpine.
Jeff Davis, I live here in Alpine, lived here eleven plus years. And uh I'm excited about this opportunity. I know some of you fairly well, don't know some of you at all. And um, yeah, again, you know, I've been a professional engineer. Uh, for twenty-five plus years. Um, quite familiar uh with living here all of my life here in Utah, so. And I am passionate about water, so.
If you work with Lon, do you know Lon?
Do not. I talked to him on the phone a couple of nights ago.
Water guy. Yeah, you guys are gonna have great conversations.
What questions do you have?
Family, tell us about your family a little bit.
Okay, so uh we have a blended family, uh, three children of mine and four children and my wife.
Who was here just previously.
Nope, that's my extra neighbor.
Okay.
Sarah, and uh. Yeah, we have seven children and we became grandparents last week for the first time.
It's the most awesome thing in the world, isn't it?
After eight and a half years, I think that would be a little faster than that. All of our children live here and uh, yeah, so very close to them.
Sarah, I know you were getting.
Uh, she didn't. She was like, why are you, oh, you must be here for Lambert, because I I uh I run in Lambert every single day. Except for the last two days.
Small world is I submitted Sarah's name to you as a potential for the planning commission because she's very active as well.
Yeah, yeah, but your next door neighbors.
Yeah, Sarah's great. Well, we appreciate you being willing to serve. Thank you very much.
Running a hundred miles is is hard.
Yeah, that was yesterday, right?
Saturday.
Saturday. Which month?
Uh, the bear. Okay, I look forward.
Thank you very much. So uh I will entertain a motion for uh approval of Jeff Davis. As a planning commissioner to serve up the next year.
Okay, I move that Jeff Davis be appointed to serve on planning commission and serve the remainder of the term ending. January of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, at which time he may be appointed to serve another term.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Are you simultaneously, Jessica? Thank you for the second, Jessica. Okay, any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Jeff. You are a member of the planning commission. If you want to stop back by City Hall at some point, uh, we can provide you with a copy with a with a binder. Which will contain all of the ordinances for your review and for you to keep at home.
Anytime, and make make sure you talk to Carolyn as well. She'll need some information from you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, uh, cross file, crossfire trail, signage, Shane?
Yeah, so we just uh put this little basic site plan together. Um, showing where the trail is, where the the forest city property line is. Um, where the area that was graded is located in the rocks. And then uh really just showing one of our trail kiosks, kind of going in the middle of that graded area.
So the, I mean, you, like, the trail committee knows, right? Because I know there's talk of redesigning the trails on the south end of Lambert Park. Is that, that's going to be out of the way, correct? With the one up trail and the two down? I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're conferring.
Yeah, well, um, I mean, they're aware of what we're trying to do here, but before we put it in, we would talk to them and. Make sure that they don't anticipate it being a conflict.
Okay.
Because we really wouldn't want to move it if we.
I know, exactly. Well, that's why I mentioned, I was like, let's make sure that we're in sync so that we don't have to do that.
Trail committee meeting is tomorrow night.
Yeah, so.
And they're discussing this, yeah.
Okay. Right, so, um, I mean, I don't know what else. We put there, at one point, we talked about putting a. Bike repair station, and there's kind of mixed feedback on that. That's something that could be added in the future, so.
I saw the pad for um lower down by where the bench is for back repair station. Oh, it's in, yes, wait, was it Monday?
They finished it yesterday. I was writing. So I was gonna show this on the screen.
And will the city maintain that or is it, does it not need maintenance?
I will need to maintain it to some degree, I mean, because it's going to be vandalized at some point, probably, unfortunately, because some people have stupid ideas.
I I just noticed in Draper, they have like a sponsor or some bike shops that maintains, yeah.
We could probably talk to the bike peddler or uh hang fifteen and they would probably help us with that. Yeah, that's a great idea. So I don't know, you know, I guess we could consider putting one of these up at the top of the trail. It's kind of a, it's typically, you'll find these in, you know, a trailhead situation where people. Getting the bikes out of the trucks, they realize you got to bump up the tire. Um, generally speaking, that's where I've seen them.
So if you're coming from the south, we don't have any signage, any kiosk or anything over there.
Yeah.
So if someone, if this was a main trail coming in to Lambert Park. You know, somebody's out exploring, they could stop there, look out over the valley, check out their trails and take their path. We're, we're, we have it sitting there. If we don't use it here, uh, the next place we were going to put these kiosks was uh Three Falls.
I totally think we should put it up there. I mean, that's what we've all been kind of strategizing toward is creating that presence up there.
Yeah, so it's just sitting there waiting.
Okay, we need a motion?
I make a motion that we uh. Uh, approve the proposed site for the crossfire trail area.
One second. Okay, we have a motion by Lon Lon, seconded by Greg Gordon. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, let's see. Apologize, I gotta keep throwing back and forth. Okay, uh, Three Falls Upper Parking Lot Concept. Shane, you taking that as well?
Yeah, so uh we were asked to put together a concept design for a little parking lot up here. In the open space above the pond in Three Falls. Um, so we put this together, I believe it had ten parking stalls. So the green shaded area, uh, that is public open space. So can you turn the annotation on, Austin?
Yeah.
So this, this is an existing trail. This trail would be new, and I doubt it would go in that location. It's an A to B or or just showing some kind of a connection. It it probably could not be done this way. And then uh the remainder of this area over here would be reclaimed once construction is done and. Uh, you know, give it some mounting and topsoil and character and and replant it so that it can. Uh, get back to a natural state, so.
Is that the site that you had in mind? If if we were going to use that signage up at the top of Crossfire, is that a good place for?
Well, when we, when we started the trail signage uh conversation, we talked about doing Lambert Park first. And then.
Yeah.
Uh, whatever, if we wanted to go up to the trailheads in Three Falls or start down low. At North Point, um, up in the ridge and then move up into Three Falls, however we wanted to handle that. But this one would be a good location for one, I think.
Okay.
When that's done. Um, our proposal would be to build a parking lot similar to what we did at the south end of Lambert Park. With the crusher fine gravel, um, and maybe uh for, I don't know, some distance. Uh, close to the road pavement so that we're not tracking gravel on the road. That's worked really well up in Lambert Park on that one, so.
And does the terrain allow, I mean, I've I've been on this trail quite a few times, but I've never been up on this site. Would the terrain allow for us to double the size of the parking lot if we decided to to create a flip sign?
Yeah, and I believe what uh, talking about this with Will a little bit. Um, there'll probably be, there's some elevation difference between the road and the parking lot here. They probably try to burn this up, just to kind of hide the parking lot a little bit.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So how come that space instead of the space a little bit further north on the other side of the pond, they also park?
So that area is wet.
Because.
Yes, I mean, you're like this, it's dry, but on a wet year, it's, it's.
Because they have other vehicles parked there, work vehicles, but you're saying it just would be long term not. When we get into another.
Yeah.
I like it.
It gets.
I like that it's expandable.
Is the pond get, does it over, does it fill up or does it just get soggy as it fills out?
Uh, the pond actually has a liner in it, but that that area over there has always been wet. There's springs all over the place up here.
Yeah.
The Lambert parking lot, do we plow that at all in the winter? Okay, so it'd be the same plan here.
Right.
I wonder if people would use the trails for snowshoeing in the winter or anything else.
Maybe fat tire.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's gonna get more snow than the rest of the.
Yeah.
Can you plow it if it's the way it is by the stake center?
It could be cloud, but it probably would have to be regraded in the spring. You know, like the this, the emergency access road, we plow it in the winter. We just have to be real careful and.
I just wonder if, you know, cars end up stacking up on that bend in the winter for. Snowshoeing or something, we may have to.
Maybe.
I don't know, I think most people though, really for snowshoeing, I don't feel like, at least in the recent years, we haven't had enough snow to really.
Yeah.
Go snowshoeing here. You're usually gonna go, you know, up towards Horsefall, Horstel or AF Canyon or Salt Lake. I don't know if that would be, you might have one or two fat bikers, fat tire bikers, but. If you need, I don't think we need to plow.
No, I'm just saying.
If we need to.
Three or four years, if we're looking at it and saying, this is problematic because we've got. Cars in the winter stacking up around that corner.
There's our ice skating pond, by the way.
Yeah, there it is.
I I like, I like that it's expandable and that we have enough room up there to, if we wanted to put a pavilion or something, we could.
Yeah, couldn't we? Could we increase it right now to have more than ten? While we're at it, just seems like this is the time to go a little bigger so we don't.
Twenty.
Risk.
It's probably gonna need it. I mean, that's, that's a popular enough area that, and it's a great intersection. Because you you know, you can climb up to it and stop there, or you can park there and climb up the rest of the way and add a corner canyon. Yeah, so you're gonna, it's probably gonna attract a lot of people.
Yeah, so, so with this, uh. I did this cover sheet three weeks ago or whatever, but we'd have to go through our process to, you know, to be able to construct something in open space. And public hearing and and that, just like we did with the other one, so.
Is this considered a park though? Meaning here you require four or five votes and super majority. Is this open space considered a park that requires a super majority?
It it's open space that requires.
Because the way you put here is parked.
Oh.
All public parks is what it says.
Yeah, I, that's probably my.
Okay, I just got lost.
Yeah.
I thought it was just Lambert Park that required a four out of five. I don't think so.
I'm gonna pull up the open space ordinance right now.
I thought it was all parks. I didn't realize it was for open space also.
Yeah, it says park here.
Yeah.
All public parks.
Let's uh. Little screen that.
Here we go.
It's public parks, though, not open space.
So is a park in open space the same?
No, it's not. It's a different designation.
This, this refers to our uh, our map, our land use map. And so all the parks and open space are shown the same on that map. And so therefore, when it says land included in these parks, it's talking about all of our open space. Because it refers to that map, which shows everything in green.
Okay. So Shane, what you just said is this requires us to go through the process, but isn't that what we're doing for the ten spaces? Could we not approve it for the? approve it for the, for twenty spaces now?
Uh, we, we could, I mean, the property's there, so.
If we're gonna go through the process, we might as well do it.
Just say a square footage or something like, um.
Like, yeah, I mean, you had an area.
Thousand square feet or whatever of parking.
Yeah, cause it's not like we have lines at Lambert Park.
We can revegetate the rest of it and leave a big area open.
How many square feet you have committed to it right now? Not including the road.
And then just double it, um, just a little bit more, cause there's trailers and.
Can you click back over to that?
They could go and do that area because there's lots of piles and.
Yeah. Interesting, horses too.
Yeah, right, it's, it's horses.
Yeah.
I think because of horse trailers, we need to make it a lot. Cause that is the area where they can access.
And it has, it is popular for horses, there's already some horse traffic.
Maybe, yeah.
So roughly, just the parking lot area, not the cherry stem driveway, uh, it's roughly thirty-eight hundred square feet.
If we doubled that, A, do we have the room presently to expand into it? Cause I think even underneath your parking lot, I can see, is that a, is that a recent photo, is it, is there a material pile there now?
Yeah, uh, it's not super recent, it could be, it's probably two years old, actually.
Okay, so do we have the space to expand it?
Uh huh.
And would that accommodate a horse trailer to turn around?
And double, you mean?
Yeah, if we double it.
Yeah, I mean, there could be some parallel parking or angle parking or.
With a horse trailer?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
You haven't seen me drive, have you?
That's cause you do it all the time.
It would probably be similar to the Horstel Falls parking lot, that's kind of what I envisioned, horse trailers are up there.
I know, but they take up all the parking spaces.
But if you think about the parking lot at the lower part of Three Falls, they have those angle parking
Yeah.
stalls that are kind of pull-through, I think those are kind of designed for.
So if we did something like that, I mean, maybe if it's cars, that might fit thirty, but it is, you know, if you have room for I don't know, five trailers in there or something.
I don't know if we need to five.
Or.
When I was thinking parallel parking, I'm thinking like on the
Along the side.
West side, they pull in, turn around and they're parked kind of parallel to the, to west side there.
You want at least two, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause usually they'll have somebody meet them.
Right.
And they'll, you know.
They come up.
But I, I think, I mean, the intent is to have a, a parking lot there, I don't I, we really need to wait until they finish construction to build it, because they're using the area, if they can't use this area, then they have to go tear something else up. This has already been torn up and so, and they're not that far from completion.
That's what I was wondering is if, if because of that, we need to limit it to the ten spaces now, is that what you're saying, that we can do the ten today?
No, you can't do it until they're done.
You're, you're saying we can't do any of it yet?
Yeah, I mean, they, as part of the Three Falls development, to finish everything up, they wanna come in and do these burns or reclaim this area and, and do all this work, which I think we need to let them do.
Yeah.
Um, but.
As long as we have an area that will be big enough, that will allow two horse trailers to be able to go in and park and be able to turn around and get, you know.
We can easily be ahead of them, I mean, if it's a good winter, they might do some of that this winter, but it could be in the spring, so.
Okay, do you need a vote or a motion?
Uh.
Just direction, go through the process.
Yeah, that's really what, what it is, so.
Do you need anything else from us?
Just direction, right?
Yep.
Okay, good, uh, let's move to staff communication. Chief, do you have anything? Austin?
Uh, I have nothing, Craig?
I do not, thanks for your, your time and commitment on the conservation easement the last couple of days, Mayor. And thanks to the council for giving us some direction instead of us just floundering, hoping we were going where you wanted us to go.
Thank you, Craig, appreciate it. Bonnie? Shane?
Do you have anything on elections at all? Votes come out and I'll go, right?
Twelve, two weeks. Okay.
Okay, uh, November sixth, we'll have our fall cleanup, like we did the spring cleanup, bins at Burgess Park, it'll be a similar thing. Um, they'll bring the bins in late Friday, they'll be there Saturday, they'll have trucks rotating bins out and emptying them. Can't remember the hours, it's like eight to two or three or something like that, and then they'll leave right at the end of that time period, they'll leave them, come back Monday and pick up for the final, the final removal bin, so, um, that information's going out in the news line. Will handed me a check, uh, for three hundred and twenty dollars right before the meeting. Um, this is, uh, the program, I think through Adobe, where the bike teams, if they come and do service, Adobe gives a dollar per hour of service, so this is from one of the teams, and I think he said we'll be getting a couple more.
Wow, this isn't the first check though, is it? I think, didn't we get one other a few months back?
Uh, we may have, and I didn't see it.
It's a great program, Adobe's awesome.
Carolyn's a treasure, so. Uh, okay. That's that, uh, street maintenance projects were, we finished our overlays today. We still have all the manholes and valves that they'll come back and cord out and put concrete rings around them, but, um.
It's gotta warm up, right?
Hmm.
It's gotta warm up, doesn't it?
No, they can do it, it works fine right now, they, we don't wanna wait, but.
I, I did get a couple of comments from neighborhoods that they wish they'd had a little bit better communication on exactly what was happening.
Yeah. And I get it, it's hard, you can never please them, I mean, we try. We tell our contractors, you have to give them a minimum of twenty-four hours notice before you pave, um, but.
Okay, what kind of notice are they giving? Cause I didn't get anything.
I, no.
Um, well, and that's the hard one, like in your case, uh, for Main Street, they would have been notifying on Main Street and expecting others to follow the detour, yeah, so, and maybe on our end we can do a better job on kind of a citywide thing on the website or Facebook or whatever, trying to say, this day construction will be here. I'll blame it on insurance handling, I guess, but we could do better in that area.
So, one of the questions I, I keep, I kept meaning to ask you this question during the week, last week. We did high bench road, and I feel like we did high bench road within the last five to seven years.
No, it's been.
Full resurface.
It's, uh, it's never been overlaid since we rebuild it.
Okay.
So it's been fifteen plus years.
Okay.
But I, I have all those records, but.
Well, I believe you, I just, I guess I'm making stuff up, yeah.
But, you know, that road, our Ridge Drives, Healy Boulevards, one hundred South, Grove Drive, Main Street, two hundred Northwestfield Road, those get a ton of traffic, so they're gonna see more maintenance than some other things that are more local, so. Anyway. Uh, that's about all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Lon? I'll let you deal with them later, Lon.
Status of code enforcement, like, are we interviewing?
We need to, we haven't put it out there yet, we, we have a part-time guy that's been doing a really good job taking care of things, um, in the interim. Uh, so, he was out today. It's like, we barely get any payments now and there's a I mean, it is all over, you could keep a guy full-time in the summer, busy taking care of that issue.
So what's the process for the city, it's, this is kind of part of the same thing, back to the website. I've seen websites that you can, it's click it and fix it, where citizens can go in, there's not someone having to answer the phone, someone having to take a message. Where we could get a website, we could have code enforcement streamlined, it would save the city money.
Yeah.
Where are we in the process of updating our website, I kind of, it's funny in a way that we live in the Mecca of Silicon Slopes, and I think, can we just do a little better?
Yeah, yeah, we can, it's just, it's just what gets bumped down in priorities and what gets bumped up. You know, we ended up focusing more time on other things that the council has asked us to, and the website kind of fell back a little bit. I always say winter is a good time to do things and
Okay.
We'll say that right now, we did a bunch of research, talked to a lot of cities, got, it's hard to get positive and negative feedback from each of the half a dozen or so companies that really focus on city websites. But, uh, we need to bring that back.
Well, and I think prioritizing an interface for code enforcement, or at least the lights are, you know, we need the light bulb changed here. Cause in the long run, that's gonna save us money.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we need to work on it.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure, I, it's, it's funny, cause I work for a company that also has a terrible website. And it really, you know, obviously business versus municipality, but it really does create a sense of who you are as a city or as a business, when people go to your website and how they can navigate that and what kind of information they can find what they can accomplish on the website, so I think it really does have a lot to do with the image we project as a city, what our website looks like.
Yeah, it's, you know, a lot of cities have staff that are dedicated to
Yeah.
maintaining their website, and if anybody that's been involved at all, it, it takes a lot of time to maintain and pull old stuff off and make sure it's fresh, and we haven't had that.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking into in terms of, I mean, we, I know we have a headcount that we haven't completely used up. And we could easily, you know, go out and find somebody who could do that for us on a part-time basis, as Jessica said, and I think Carla said as well, that we have you know, we have resources around us, people who are truly talented in that area. And, uh, for me, I guess, you know, when we, that, when we announced that there's a public hearing for the, the conservation easement. That's a pretty high level of interest around the city in that, with no matter which side you were landing on, on that discussion. It'd be great to be able to push that out there that, hey, tonight is the night, you know, if you wanna have input, tonight's the night, and be able to really push that through our website through our social media, and create some sense of energy around a, a subject that is fairly important to the community. Could be in any number of issues, but the ability to, outside of the, you know, the text, the group text that goes out or the the, the voicemail messages, really have something that, again, pushes the message out there in a way that re, almost demands public involvement.
Yeah, yeah, you know, when we do update our website, I'd like to have something on there that tells you kind of how many hits you're getting every day.
Yeah.
Cause to me, it's different than social media, you know, if you're sitting there at lunch and you're flipping through Facebook or whatever, city information comes up versus the website, you go seek that, you're looking for something.
Right.
Instead of just casually flipping through.
That is useful.
Yeah, if you can get feedback.
And that would be built in to almost anything.
Yeah.
Other than our current. Unless we have found it.
Anything else, Jessica?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, I just have two things, um, where are we on, uh, getting the curbs repainted in front of Healy Park and Smooth Canyon, because I drove by again last night. I come in and same story every day, we have, and Chief and I have talked about that how it's really kind of hard to tell right now that it's a red curb.
Yeah.
I mean, I've stopped and I've walked out, I've talked to parents, I've, I've called, uh, our officers out to enforce. But when I look at that curb, I think, yeah, I can see how you missed that being a red, red curb.
Yeah, I'm trying to get somebody here to do it, I've talked to a, a company, believe it or not, even paint is an issue.
Yeah.
When they had the, um, storm in Texas, that affected refineries, which in turn affected paint. So, e- even getting paint is an issue.
Yeah, even if we did something that was only temporary, I mean, cheap paint, whatever it is, now is the peak of the soccer season.
I think we're within a week of having it, so.
Okay, okay, I just know it's gonna cool down here pretty quick.
Yeah.
Push us off.
The other thing that may help there is putting up a few signs, I think that with the red, it kind of reinforces the message.
Yeah.
Just a few short signs like we've done, I think would.
I've probably stopped there four or five times in the last two weeks, just to talk to people, let them know that there is enforcement, that they, they will get a ticket. Um, and speaking of enforcement, that's my next question is, how are we on, uh, finding a codes enforcement officer uh, that can start outside of what we've been doing for the water this year in the absence of Tommy?
Yeah, uh, we just need to get the, the, uh, job advertisement freshened up and sent out, so.
What, what you're expecting?
Tom, I hope in the next week.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I actually had a question about the cemetery, I know, maybe it was like last summer or December before. Um, we were talking about gates for the cemetery to close it at night, there were issues with, um, teenagers vandalizing. And I had a neighbor who recently had that vandalism happen to their child's gravesite. Um, what happened, I, I remember like I saw drawings and renderings and then.
Uh, it came back at a pretty high cost, and the council just my recollection is, just said, yeah, we're not gonna do it right now.
Is that what happened?
Could we increase fees to help compensate for that cost?
Well, with, we're gonna have to probably increase fees anyway when we get the price tag on the north expansion.
Right. And then if, okay, so let's say we, if we were to do gates, how many would we need? Because I know there's several entries into it, so it's not just one.
We'll be up to four, right?
Yeah.
Is it four?
Well, there's actually one to use pies. There's two on Grove Drive, one on Pioneer, one on Main, and one by the shop.
And we can't get one that's cheaper, that would still be, I mean, it wouldn't have to be a heavy duty thing, right?
Well.
I don't, I honestly don't remember the details, I just remember that there was conversation.
Elevations and that's, is it slope and which ways can they swing, which way are you gonna slide, how do you?
It's like everything else, there's a lot of issues. Um, I mean, if we have to have somebody go huck five gates every night and open them the next morning, you know, and somebody wants to get in there, you know, the parks guys, they leave it, uh, like three thirty, they start early, leave at three thirty in the summer.
Well, how do we do the?
Um, that's what we started looking at, and that's what got.
They're locked open, that's why their kids are pulling them out.
The bathrooms are locked at night, and unlocked in the mornings.
Some of the newer ones have a timer system, like when we got the restroom in Legacy, it had the timer system built into it and it was not reliable at all, and so we went away from it, and then they kind of did some updates and things, and the newer ones, I believe, have that capability. And council, they've been working better.
Yeah, they've come a long way in a couple of years, yeah.
And then I, um, wanted to speak to Craig more in depth to me after, you know, off-site about what we as a city, what we can do as far as enforcing, um, school entities, that, you know, what our reach is and how far we can go. No, I'm not talking about the signs, I'm talking about the traffic, so if I could have a conversation with you, maybe I'll give you a ring in the next couple of days.
Okay, I'd like to involve the chief in that too, because that's really, uh, where we're gonna need some help on maintaining some order as they enter and exit on Main Street.
So I had a guy park right here by the drinking fountain on Red Curve one day, and I was pulling out, and we have red there, so you can see without pulling clear out in the traffic lane. And I finally got out, and I rolled down my window, and I said, hey, that red curb's there for you too. I almost got flipped the bird. He's like, no, I'm, I'm good, I'm in my truck, I'm just waiting, it's okay, I said, no, it's not. So, they just, they fill the tile, they come parking handicaps stalls and it's, they'll, they'll even park behind parked cars in the parking lot over here waiting for kids and. they'll, they'll even park behind parked cars in the parking lot over here waiting for kids and they just think it's okay.
And that's, that's it for me today.
Okay, thanks Carla. Greg?
I think at one point, there was a discussion of, uh, doing a study on recreation impact fees. Has that progressed or how's that going?
It's one of the next ones, so we're, we're, uh, on the tail end of our culinary and pressure irrigation uh, impact these studies that we'll be bringing to the council soon. Uh, the sewer is started. I've asked, um, for the streets. Kinda, we just kinda got the ball rolling on that a little bit and then our recreation would be what we need to address, so, yeah.
Is there any foreseeable timeline?
Um, honestly, by the time we get into it and get it completed, I would say it'd be summer sometime next year. Maybe, maybe s- maybe quicker.
No, uh, impact fees for parks, city parks, et cetera, but.
Just about the impact fees that we collect now and where they're going?
Yeah, cause I think there's a sense they're out of date, you know. There was, um, at some point, there was a mention at the, at, uh, planning commission about impact fees and our reliance on for the budget. I wonder, um, it'd be good to see sort of some projections. Maybe that's part of our regular budget cycle, but you know, let's say impact fees went away, right? There's no billing demand, you know, are we solid and stable?
We do not rely on impact fees here. The, the only one, uh, that helps really is the pressure irrigation. The way that one was set up is those, uh, impact fees help hair bomb payment. But it's, it's actually just a fairly small percentage of the bond payment.
Yeah. You'll hear people say that we need no tax fees because we're gonna run out of.
Yes, that's the common refrain, yes.
Lose those impact fees, but they're not as, they're not the lifeline for the city. But you help us though. I mean, they help us create parks and maintain them.
Yeah, um, lastly, um, with our relatively high sales tax year, maybe you might look mayor at a elevated, um, bonus year end for staff or something, suggestion, you know, given where we are.
Okay.
Given the. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Jason?
I'm gonna say something. Hey, I just wanted to ask if, if there's a chance that we can, um, I talked with Shane about this. Um, just send a, a reminder out to those running for city council or the mayor that there are places you can put your signs and places you can't. Shane wasn't on the email that Bonnie sent out to all of us responding to Ed's. But if some people think they can put it on city property and other peoples think they can't, that's problematic. I think a, a, a good message to everyone would like, when Bonnie sends out, campaign signs shall not be placed on city property. There's no ifs, ands or buts about that. That's what it is. And it says, I'm basically need to have permission from the homeowner or business owner to put a political sign up on their park strip or their property. No, I mean, that's what, that's what the rule is and that's what was sent out at the beginning. Um, and then lastly, um, she sent out that improperly placed signs will be removed by city personnel. I know that that's, we, our city personnel are busy, but, um, at the very least, um, we need to get on the same page as a city of what's allowed and what's not, cause I'm seeing quite a few problems there and if, and we just wanna be fair to all candidates, is all I'm saying. And I know that's happened every political cycle, but I still think it's healthy to send that out.
Yeah, and Jason and I talked about this, but we, earlier in the year, we updated our sign ordinance and one of the sections was the political sign section. And now going back and reading it after seeing some situations, and this is common when you change something in an ordinance, uh, I think there needs to be some clarification there. Um, it talks about, um, and when we say no ifs, ands or buts on city property, we have to be careful on that because our ordinance does say you can put them in park strips with the permission of the property owner that has.
Right, that changed. That was one of the things.
Yep, that was it. And it, but it says in front. And so, kinda corner lot, how do you, you know, I think we just didn't.
So maybe we can just clarify, because the email that was sent out to everyone was that, um, campaign signs shall not be placed on city property. But obviously the next line says that you can put it on a, a park strip with the property owner's.
Right. You've got city property, like the corner open space that we have on the corner of, of Candy Crest and Ridge, yeah. That one has traditionally been used.
Right.
And I think, have we permitted that in writing?
It's, it's not in writing and that's one of the, one of the questions that came up.
I remember we discussed it in the last election, we said it's okay, but it, it really, Jason's point, i- it's kinda foggy. Well, if it's okay on that city property, then why isn't it on that city property?
Yeah, and also, like, for example, Ed, uh, what's his name? Kelly Law, he wasn't in this meeting, so he doesn't think he can. But right now there's Ethan Allen and Ed Bush is there, cause they maybe know they can based on that conversation. And it's not really a fair thing to only people who happen to be sitting in that meeting.
Right.
Know they can do it.
And there's a large banner, I noticed this morning on Healy, where the, I think the church owns the property out down to the bottom where that road is to our well.
Right, that's actually, that's one that I noticed today and, um.
Is that city property or is that?
It is city property, so that one needs to come down.
Yeah, and it's a, a fairly large substantial sign.
Yeah.
When it says improperly placed signs are removed by city personnel, do we actually do that or is that not something that we would do?
I don't, I don't know. I honestly don't know if we've removed them before or not. I haven't. Yeah, I think we've contacted the candidate and said, hey, can we take this sign down?
I mean, the, the operative words are, you need to have the permission of the landowner. Strip is one of those gray areas that I know that some past council members have been really uptight about it, but that is perceived to be the homeowner's property. It's not, but it's perceived to be. And so I understand that that becomes kind of a, a gray area that can be taken for granted. And I, we've, we've already addressed it, but there are pieces of property that are absolutely either parks or pieces of city property and everybody knows it, yet signs continue to go there.
Yeah, so I guess direction from the council, the Ridge Drive location, Ridge Drive and Candy Crest. Um, and we can tell everybody, right now I've told them, traditionally they've been allowed there. But if I need to pull that back, I can.
Here's the thing, it's not just political signs all year round. That's allowed for community organizations. So if you're gonna discriminate against politics, right, or political speech, that might be a problem, right? We're gonna have to clean the ball.
What's all year round there? You can put anything on that corner, is what you're saying?
Yeah, community theater, yeah.
Kind of community events. The problem is.
But that's still not written.
It's not in the ordinance.
No, like.
See, at one time.
I've never placed a sign there, cause I've never known that you could do that.
Yeah, the corner down here by the gazebo, the location at Ridge and Candy Crest, and I think there was one somewhere out on Westfield Road. Uh, the city said, we're okay with these community event type signs there. I always thought it was in ordinance, but it's not.
Yeah, yeah. It, it really, it shouldn't be allowed unless it's in.
The tough thing, I, I talked to Austin to tip out this too, because we, this last weekend, we had all sorts. We had all the campaign signs and then we have all these commercial signs popping up everywhere.
Yeah, there's a lot of those.
And, and, um, and it might be just as simple to just eliminate it from any corners anywhere and say, this is our sign ordinance and there is no, there is, there is the temporary thing with a community event type things, but no commercial advertising, you know. Yeah, and that's what everyone's just taken liberty saying, oh, there's a sign there. I'll put mine in.
Yeah.
And, eh, regardless of the campaign, it's a campaign sign just exact- exacerbates it.
Yep.
Cause they see, there's a sign, here's mine going in.
So let me give you another situation that the ordinance doesn't anticipate this way you have for having an engineer. So double-fronted lots like Allegheny Court and Healy Boulevard or, uh, what's it? The street in South Point, I think it's Blue. No, so we have the white, the white vinyl fence on, um, Candy Crest and then the Zero Escape along there. So those lots are kinda double-fronted. Can that homeowner permit somebody to put a political sign or other sign on their back? Will be kinda their back park.
Well, I've, I've actually put one on the back of the fence. It was on the resident's side facing out.
Yeah. And see, the way the ordinance is written, the new ordinance earlier this year, it says in front of the home. And so then you get into corner lots and these double-fronted situations and it, it doesn't address those in any kind of detail, so.
So I think it'd be healthy to have an email go out, just explaining it. And if we decide, for example, on that corner, if we wanna take them out, let's have them take it out. If we don't, then you're probably gonna have eighteen signs in there based on the number that are in there. And that's just, it's just kinda lame.
Yeah.
There's four signs from each candidate. There's two candidates in there and there's all these other candidates. That's a lot of sign for a
Yeah.
An eight by eight by eight.
So.
Yeah, in other places like that.
Not all the council was, uh, included on the email, but I think all the candidates were. And if I need to go back and clarify something on that, on that corner, I think that would be the only.
Yeah, and anywhere that it's like you say, that we have public, uh, uh, city property and whether that be there in Healy or.
What about that one that you just answered? What was that's?
So that's, that's public property, but it's outside of city jurisdiction?
No, it's that.
That's the metro water property. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that'd be great, uh, uh, unless the city council has an issue with that. But basically sending it out and saying, only private, where you have permission from the homeowner.
Well, it's, it's pretty ironic that the violators are all running for an office to help enforce city ordinances. And so I, I would expect that we really police it and just, if somebody's out of line, they need to do that. Know that, hear it, because, you know, it's, at the very least, it's a little hypocritical to be running for office to enforce or create ordinances and violating the wide run.
So it looked like on that one, you said that permission would have to be gained from the water district. Okay.
Yeah, and, and if they give one candidate permission, the way I understand the state law, they would have to allow everyone to do it.
On that one, the water district.
Oh, yeah.
Basement.
Yeah, so. And as stingy as they are, I doubt that they ever meant that. So.
Okay.
But we can, we can send an email out and just try to clarify some things.
Second.
I'm not done. You guys wanna keep going to it? I got lots of.
Really done?
No, I'm done.
Real quickly, we get to turn the phone to this one. Are, do we have two, uh, maybe Karen, I said or Nancy in the news line, or just one?
So I contacted, uh, Josh.
Josh, yeah.
Um, but he said, I think he said that he's contacted by someone else, said, hey, there's RA one scheduled, so.